Let us pray. Your Lord, we thank you for this rain. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this commission. Bless us all. Help us to do those things that uplift the citizens of Kingsville. In thy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The minutes of the last meeting which was held Monday, July 10, 1989 were both in commission packets. And I had one minor correction that I've already talked to Deanna about, and it's just one word which kind of changes the need of the sentence. And what about the other commissions? Do you have any additions or corrections?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Satter?
I have one possible correction. I believe it's on page two. Yes, the third whereas... Is everybody with me?
Right.
The city commission does not believe that it has the full cooperation the city manager does not feel that it can work with the city manager in carrying out its legislative and policymaking functions. Is legislative, is that accurate? Do we carry out legislative functions? City Attorney here?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain that, please?
Does the city commission carry out legislative functions?
Yes, sir, while the commission as a whole is considered a legislative body, and the enactment of ordinance and resolutions is a legislative function.
Okay, thank you. No change.
The minutes do stand approved as read. Before we go on to the agenda items, I want to announce the next Sunday in the park, which will be held Sunday, August 13, at the Mary Claire Hill Park, which is next to the flea station. It will be sponsored by the Boys and Girls Club of Kingsville, and it will be held from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We invite all people to come out. Are there any other announcements from the commission? Then we will go to agenda item number one. Consider resolution amending Resolution Number 86007, rules of procedure to add requirement that commissioners be allowed to discuss agenda items for up to 20 minutes without interruption, and to amend the use of "previous question" in Robert's Rules of Order. I would like to tell Commissioner Satter, at this time, that I do intend to vote for this, but I don't want to make a lot of discussion with this. So Commissioner Satter is the one who puts this under the table?
Oh, okay. I've got some copies of Robert's Rule I want to pass out to everyone. Maybe just go over one item. If you will notice on the pages has motions, ranking, and requirements, it's this page here. The back of...
Oh, okay.
The one without the errors.
Yeah, oh, okay.
The errors.
Yeah.
That's exactly what errors. You'll notice in subsidiary motions, number seven, where it refers to what we're discussing in this particular agenda item, calling for the previous question. And you can see in parentheses what that is used for, is to close debate, which we're all aware of. That's what we use it for. But if you will follow across what is required when the previous question is called, and get to the vote required column, you will see that a two-thirds vote is required. And I know the ruling that the city attorney gave us on this particular matter, and of course, there's a discussion on this particular agenda item in the packet on this, but I would like for us to be, to go by the letter of the law of this. If the call for the question is there, that we do take a roll call vote to see if that in fact does pass.
Oh, I thought you wanted to eliminate that.
No, I...
Was that with the agenda item?
Well, I want to further...
I mean...
Well, I want to further, because in the beginning of this commission, we set down, I don't know whether it was by agenda, but our general policy statement, that we were going to observe Robert's Rules of Order. Isn't that correct? Well, I think we should do that, and I would further like to restrict it, which we have the right to do by an agenda item, to the 20 minutes. Once the 20 minutes has expired, if the call for the question should, you know, to go through the specifics, the call for the question should arise, then a roll call vote would have to meet the vote required.
So you don't want to eliminate the use of the call, so you just want...
No, no. I wanted to, I actually make it more restrictive than this particular printout shows.
I will adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the commission?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Garcia?
You're saying 20 minutes total discussion, or 20 minutes...
At least 20 minutes before the call for the question can occur.
Okay. So until total discussion?
Well, no, until the call for the question can occur, because it may fail. The call for the question may fail. Two-thirds vote in this group is four votes.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you're talking about the 20 minutes discussion, total commission, not just one individual, not per commissioner, before the question can be called.
That's correct.
Total discussion.
Total discussion, that's correct. Okay, just so that we're really, really clear on what we're voting on. Can you make the motion, please, to keep the roll call going? Say that total motion, so we can make sure that we understand it.
I adopt the resolution as stated, to allow the commissioners to discuss an agenda item up to 20 minutes without interruption, and to amend the use of the previous question in Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay, a total discussion.
I believe that's what it said.
Is there any more discussion from the commissioners? Any discussion from the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
That motion did pass. Agenda item number two is consider resolution rescinding Resolution Number 89007 and reinstating Carlos E. Lerma as city manager.
I move that we rescind Resolution 89007 and reinstate Carlos Lerma as the city manager.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion from the commission? Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the audience? No call vote, please. Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Westbrook?
No.
Mayor Lemmons?
No.
Agenda item number three is consider setting a date for a public hearing for Carlos Lerma.
I move that we set this date on August 7, at 10 o'clock in the morning, to begin it then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion from the commission? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
So the date for Mr. Lerma's public hearing is August 7 at 10 o'clock.
Madam Mayor? May I ask you? Did you think of place?
No, we didn't.
I suggest that you donate a facility large enough to accommodate the citizens that might be getting to live in that type of office.
We'll certainly take that into consideration, but since it's not an agenda item, we won't discuss it right now. Agenda item number four is going to be open bids for health insurance, bid number 90-02.
She got one more thing?
Door is here. She's here?
Yes.
I just wondered if they use a standard form. Did they use our standard form, though?
No, so we use a special form.
Is it, it should be in here, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ask her to give me a copy of what she's got.
As you folks know, I've been paying representatives to have a public hearing. I had discussions with the city attorney, talked to me about it being on August 9, and I know that's what he recommended to me. I have plans that I've been doing for some time, be out of town, and not returning to the gate. I would be able to hold the hearing on the night. In fact, we can consider holding on another night. I would like to request that, though.
We'll take that into consideration. We have already voted on the 7th.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, but I didn't hear it as the 7th until it was announced the 7th after you had said it. So, and I had had previous discussions and explained to Mr. Williams about my travel plans, and asked that it could be reconsidered and put on the night.
Well, it's impossible for me to be there on the 9th, but the 8th would be okay as far as I'm concerned. And I don't know how, you know, we haven't had a chance to discuss the 8th.
Will you be able to be early?
I'm due back at noon on the 8th.
I'm available anytime. I'm available anytime.
I'm available late.
City manager?
Yes.
What is your opinion of it?
Whatever you all would like to have it is strictly scheduled.
I have discussed this with the city attorney last week. We want to change it.
Let's change it to 1:00 p.m.
How's that?
He wants to reconsider his motion. He can withdraw it.
Okay. I move that we withdraw the... I'll withdraw the motion.
To have the hearing on the 7th. Okay. Is there a second for Mr. Westbrook?
A second?
Second?
I withdraw my second.
Yes.
Before you make another motion, please understand that I'm coming from the West Coast on that day. Flying out of Sacramento, California, coming back after vacation, it was planned a good long time. And if you could make it late in the evening on the 8th, later in the evening on the 8th, or I know the mayor can't be here on the 9th, on the 9th, it would really accommodate my situation if you can do that. If you can't, you can't.
Evening is fine.
I think we have to have our calendars adjusted.
I can be here whenever. What's your pleasure on the time?
I'd like, I would, based upon my discussion with the city attorney, and he was going to recommend the 9th, but the 9th was the time, and that would give me time to prepare and be ready to go, with no delays. Could we do it on the 9th?
As far as I'm concerned, it's impossible. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's impossible. And I don't think the commission will have it as planned.
But what is the deadline we're looking for? It has to be within 30 days, right?
Anytime between, what is it, 1st and the 9th?
How about the 8th at 7:00? Does that accommodate everybody?
That'd be all right, too.
I'll do my best.
I'll go 1.
I need a vote on the...
On the 1st row.
Okay. Commissioner Satter, this is to withdraw the motion. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Now I need another one. Okay, I just made, I think, our city attorney...
Your Honor, we'll have to have a special meeting on the 9th, anyway, because that's the 30th day after the preliminary resolution, and that's a day you should consider applying to resolution of the law.
If there's many people, it has been here, this may last till the 9th. We'll stay with the 8th.
I just told the mayor that a special meeting will be required on the 9th. I request that all the commissions pick ahead, because we'll have an agenda item for this purpose on the 9th.
We understand. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion now regarding having the Lerma, Mr. Lerma's hearing on the 8th at 7:00?
That's someone.
Is there a second?
I...
Discussion. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
So Mr. Lerma's public hearing will be held August the 8th at 7:00 p.m. Okay, agenda item, we're on agenda item number four, open bids for health insurance.
They're not using the bid form. This one also is not using a bid form. We may have to revert back to staff to look at what each one had, because they're not using that bid form. You know, they got a bid from CNA also.
Here's one that happened, I got it.
I don't know. This one does. Blue Cross Blue Shield does have the bid form. I'll read a total for employee dependent across the bottom of the rate, administrative fee. 28871, 2598, specific stop loss 2158, maximum monthly 24115, and total terminal 28592, administrative fee runoff 28592. That's the only one that's got the bid form across.
Huge tax over there. I guess this is a bid form.
This is from, also from Blue Cross Blue Shield, 323, 31359, and all the rest of them were.
I don't believe they do.
Coastal Bend Health Plan. Also did not use the bid form. Monthly rate total 29945, Coastal Bend Health Plan.
These people really expect this to be open.
This is the Metropolitan. Didn't have a bid.
No bid. This is on sale.
Okay, these bids may be viewed if anyone is interested in the purchasing agent's office door binds, and will be acted on a later date, too. Agenda item number five is consider awarding a contract on computer system for the police department.
Mayor, members of the commission, systems design was a low bidder for a qualified bidder for the system. Sergeant Robert Oliver and Chief Garza are here to answer any questions in terms of the application and use of the machine. Ron Heiss and Dave Starling are also present. I'll wait till the hum goes away. The bid was, low bid was $34,215,000. The state has awarded a grant in the amount of $15,320. The city will fund the remaining $18,895, which has been budgeted and is available. Staff recommends award to system design, and...
There's a motion regarding a new system for the police department.
I move that we award it to systems design. Are they the low qualified medical?
Yes, sir. The state did require low bid procedure to be utilized because of the grant, and they are the low qualified bidder. The state has reviewed the bid and bids, and concurred with staff that they are the low qualified bidder.
Did anybody say...
Just a second? Yes, I said, put your...
Let's get Chief Garza up here, and whoever else needs to help him with this. Chief, does this fit? Does this satisfy the police department? Does this what you people feel like is the best?
Yes, sir, it's a beginning. We're not satisfied, you know, with the, for a beginning, but it's a start. This is, we can add on to it later. With the amount of money that we're spending for it, this is the best system we can get, I believe.
This can be added on to, right?
Yes, sir.
The system can be expanded to add additional terminals and workstations, as well as additional packages, such as a radiolog type system, finger frames, pawn shop, so that they can add these additional modules later on, when they'd like to add them on the existing equipment they can start out with.
Okay, that was all. Only question I had was that we're getting started with our computer records.
Yes, sir. At present time, we have no computerization, other than Detective Division, and this is the start of what we hope will be, lead us to have 100% computerization, in as far as practical.
Does the commission have any other questions? Commissioner Garcia?
Is the system compatible with the system we have now? Can we link them?
You could take your, what you have now are some PCs that are, that you have hooked up. You can hook these PCs into this other system as well, and yes, you can utilize them. The existing software and stuff that you have on your other system is not compatible, but that's what you're going to be changing. All this is automated to take into account what you're presently doing, as well as additional areas that concern us, the police department was wanting to address. But yes, you can use your existing equipment.
Any other questions from the commission? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was passed to award the contract to systems design of Portus Christie for the police department computer system. Agenda item number six is consider awarding bid on sewer pipe, bid number 89-32.
I move that we award bid on sewer pipe bid number 89-32.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding agenda item number six from the commission? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Agenda item number seven is consider second reading of an ordinance amending Title 10 Traffic Chapter 3 Traffic Control Devices Section 12 Traffic Control Areas Paragraph O, Area O, to provide for the installation of stop signs, US Highway 77 Bypass, and San Jacinto-Epitron Boulevard.
I move... Tag it.
Discussion from the commission regarding agenda item number seven? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Agenda item number eight is consider second reading of an ordinance amending Title 10 Traffic Chapter 7 Stopping Standing and Parking Section 22 Parking Prohibited on Certain Streets North Most Side of 700 Block of East Fleet Avenue.
I so move.
Second. Any discussion from the commission on agenda item number eight? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Mayor Lemmons?
Yes.
Our motion was passed. Agenda item number 10, consider resolution providing for the exemption of certain tangible personal property not used in the production of income pursuant to House Bill 82.
All fair members of the commission, voters of Texas approve the constitutional amendment to exempt certain tangible personal property. What we're talking about are travel trailers and airplanes. House Bill 82 provided the implementation of the standards through statute for this particular bill. It involves, in our case, some 196 travel trailers with a total value of about $460,000. It will cost us some $3172 in appraisal fees, and in order to collect this particular revenue, we're receiving only $3,700 in total. The county has already voted to exempt the property. There's indication that the school district may or may not do so, because they do have some value in aircraft that is quite considerable, and they have not made that determination. Staff does recommend the property be exempted. Our collection rate is much lower on this than it is with real property, and we think we'll be spending more than what we're gaining.
Sir, motion to guardian, agenda item number nine?
I move that we drop the resolution. Are you ready, Dan?
A resolution providing for the exemption of certain tangible personal property not used in the production of income pursuant to House Bill 82. Whereas voters of Texas have passed a constitutional amendment authorizing the exemption of tangible personal property not used in the production of income, and whereas the Texas Legislature through House Bill 82 has amended the tax code to implement these exemptions and permits local political subdivisions to determine whether they choose to exempt or tax such property, and whereas the city commission has reviewed the revenue realized and cost of appraisal and collection necessary to tax such personal property, and therefore desires not to avail itself of the opportunity to levy and collect such taxes as provided by the tax code. Now therefore be it resolved by the city commission of the city of Kinston, Texas, that the city of Kinston shall not hereafter tax tangible personal property exempted by subsectioning Amendment 14A of the Texas Tax Code, and the Clayboro County Appraisal District is directed to exclude such property from appraisal and the certified tax rule.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
Any discussion from the commission? Any discussion from the commissioners? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Motion did pass. Agenda item number ten is consider resolution appointing a presiding judge for absentee ballot board.
I move we adopt the resolution appointing a presiding judge for the absentee ballot board, whereas the City Commission of the City of Kingsville, Texas approved ordinance number eight-nine-zero-one-five ordering a special election to be conducted on August twelfth, nineteen eighty-nine, and whereas the purpose of said election is to vote for or against the adoption of a di, an additional one-half of one percent sales and use tax within the city to be used to reduce the property tax rate, and whereas the City Commission approved resolution number eight-nine-zero-zero-five appointing election judges as officials of said election, and whereas the city received the resignation of Mrs. Gladys Melton as presiding judge of the absentee ballot board on June eighteenth, nineteen eighty-nine, be resolved by the mayor and the City Commission of the City of Kingsville, Texas, that Mrs. Isabel Canales be appointed as the presiding judge for the absentee ballot board. Approve this twenty-fourth, fourth day of July nineteen eighty-nine by majority vote of the City Commission of the City of Kingsville, Texas.
Is there a second to that vote? Any discussion from the commission? From the audience? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Agenda item number eleven, consider review of handicapped renovation plans and specifications and authorized advertisement for bids.
Mayor and members of the commission, the city received grant from Texas Department of Commerce and Recreation of City Hall. The city's architect here on this project, Mrs. Jerry Maury, is present and would like to briefly overview the more, some of the more explicit points of the, uh, plan with the commission and to have the commission authorize us to proceed with the bill on this project.
Okay, I think the best thing to do here would be for me to give you a brief summary of the kinds of things that we need to do, then I'll bring the plans up there and show them to you on the commission channel. See, I will be allowed afterwards or I'll bring it back and let you look at it. Okay, basically what we need to do to bring this project up to, uh, compliance with handicap standards is to replace the elevator with a new elevator. Uh, you need to be able to get a wheelchair into the elevator and have them turn around to exit facing out. Second thing you need is at least two restrooms in the building which are handicapped accessible. Virtually all of our restrooms, uh, with the exception of two on second floor or one step or two steps up, this does not meet. Uh, inside the restroom, of course, your toilet seat needs to be about two to four inches higher than normal. Uh, you need grab bars on each side, you need the lavatory raised up in most cases, uh, and you need turnaround space for the wheelchair itself, uh, unless certain very specific dimensions on the restroom are met. Uh, there would need to be a drinking fountain on each floor. Uh, hallways need to be forty-four inches wide, except that they can be a little bit smaller if the doors are oversized. The doors to each room in the building need to be either two foot clear normally, or in some cases, if you've got space on either side, enough space, they can be two-six clear. Each door needs to have certain kinds of maneuvering clearance space from the, from the latch set that you're going to grab to open the door back so the wheelchair can approach it. There's a different dimension for every different configuration of door that you could think of. Uh, outside, we need to provide two parking spaces, properly sized, marked, and a continuous wheelchair accessible entrance into the building. Additionally, um, the rooms in the buildings that do not have to be handicapped accessible include all of your storerooms, your mechanical rooms, uh, the extra restrooms, and a small stage such as our commission chamber stage. Uh, for us, in order to get into the building, we'll need a curb ramp, um, here into the alley, a curb ramp at the front, a ramp up to the side door, and of course, a ramp between the two levels of first floor itself. Uh, additionally, we need two parking spaces for wheelchairs inside the commission chambers. And in many cases, the signs, certainly the signs in the restrooms, but preferably the other signs in the building need to be engraved signs at a particular sixty-inch height so that a blind person can come along and feel the words on the sign. The knobs to mechanical rooms have to have a certain abrasive coating if they don't have a lock on them. Okay, I will show you from the drawings how we're gonna do that. Okay, this is the first floor plan where you've got Sixth Street along here, you've got the alley back here, and you've got Clayburg Avenue on the page over here. Right now, we have an elevator in this location, uh, because we've got dimension problems inherent in narrow Engleway, and we've got some technical problems that will be here in your main front entrance lobby. So that people who do come in this door, not the handicapped, the wheelchair, but the other folks can get to it by the way. The entrance for the handicap will be located here. Uh, we had to move it over in order to get a ramp in, and moving it over, we had to recess it so it doesn't swing out onto the sidewalk. Uh, but this is the only door that's really reasonable for us to get in. There's three risers here, there's three risers here, and you can't come in a service entrance to meet the handicap requirements. So we've got ramps in both directions here, up into this platform, in order that when you widen Sixth Street, we'll still have a continuous flow of wheelchair traffic. A ramp here and a ramp over here with one handicap space on Clayburg Avenue and one handicap space, we've made arrangements with Clayburg Bank to designate one of our spaces as the handicap space. Okay, once you get to this rear entrance, uh, there's a kind of entryway here where you miss the port, will have two spaces to pay fines out and a little shelf for the handicapped in between. This wall, of course, is moved back, therefore, in order to make it more, well, this wall moves back. Uh, personnel office has certain excess furniture that needs to go out in here. When that happens, though, uh, right now, that's not a secure area. There's no door or anything, so we're adding a doorway at this point. The restrooms, which are here right now, get turned into one storeroom, reusing all of the fixtures that we can reuse over here. This will put your restrooms in a central location, right by the stairway, and free up this area so that some future point, you wanna demolish this and make offices and expand in that area, you can. Right now, you can't do that because you have sewer pipe above the port that's cutting off expansion there, and of course, the two steps up. We looked at putting restrooms in this area. This is fourteen inches of solid concrete, and it's just way out of the money to try to remove that. This is at least column, uh, step up so that we can make a platform there for the personnel to step up before they go through. No change here. Okay, commission chambers. Um, there's been a slight change in the regulation so that we can no longer just take the six seats out straight across from your entrance doorway. They want six inches more, so that would mean eight seats that we would lose. As you can see, we can't very well lose eight seats and accommodate the public very well. So what we're planning to do is to move the doors, so there's one door on that side, one door on that side, and the center part is closed. This gives you an opportunity, of your four seats, you take out to put three in the back. The handicapped then will come in through this door, maneuver behind the road, and the front of the wheelchair will be underneath the seat back of the roadway front. No access to the stage at this time. This will be the men's room. The granite top floor, wall covering on the walls. The ladies' room here. Basically, the same access that you have now with the exception that right now, you have a partition in the ladies' room between the toilet and the lavatory, there just wasn't room to accommodate that. You have the same number of fixtures. Drinking fountain will go here, so that all your sewer is tied here, the service sink goes here, so that basically, except for the second floor, use of that sewer pipe, it could even be cut back to here and abandoned completely for that area. Okay, in order to do something about this hallway, now that we've blocked it off of restrooms, we're proposing to cut straight through into the main lobby so that when you're standing here, you pretty much have a straight shot. Employee working here can almost see an employee working right there. This'll give you, I think, better security and, you know, just a feeling that the building is popular. Okay, stairway. Plus, when people come down the stairs from upstairs, they don't have to go back and go back this way to get to the utility apartment. They can come straight down. This counter gets cut back and turned around. The collections area that's here is being abandoned at staff's request. They're putting all their collections activities over here, and this will be office space. Let's see, that's basically the first floor layout. Okay, on the second floor, we're doing a lot less. The elevator will come up here, which is in the main lobby right now. We're losing seating in that area, but we're not taking anybody's offices. We planned this coffee room, and the floor is all deteriorated, so go in and put a new floor in there. It'll be putting plywood down under the mess we've got and bringing up a bit into that area. There's a, a series of doors on the second floor that even need a new set of hinges on it to make it open more, or in some cases, you turn the door and swing it the other way. The case over here, uh, door size was okay, but the hallway size wasn't, so I negotiated a deal whereby we can put a slightly larger door using a rough frame that should be in the wall and not have to tear up the whole plaster wall, uh, to, to make the hallway wider. Here, I'm proposing about a foot and a half of additional hallway space, so this'll feel like straight through shot instead of being a narrow door like here where these people are in a different space from those people. There's a certain amount of work that the city staff has requested, and the commission has requested, everything from painting, to patch the wall covering over there that's tearing off, and, uh, on the first floor, there was a request to have a little coffee area where they might have a seat, since we already have plumbing, a microwave, refrigerator, which would be provided under a separate budget and separate thing. So to make up for the fact that they're losing the space which they're using for coffee right now, of course, the older machines right there. In terms of phasing, we are asking if the contractor not plan on doing work all over the building simultaneously. In other words, we expect that this department will need to move out while work is going on in this area. Uh, certainly in here, these folks will need to move out while work is going on in there. Uh, there's been some talk as to where to go and what happens. Contractor will have the use of this space for his office like, and unless there's some objection, also this restroom, so he might, if he wanted to, use this as a hardware storage and this for the, uh, office and incoming new supplies and stuff like that. This could be on the walk-in keys he chooses. We're trying to reuse as much, many things as possible, like reusing old door frames because the color is right, the wood is right. If the hardware works, we're reusing it unless it's totally scratched and, and plumbing fixtures will reuse, but we'll put new chrome and guts in and make them work again. Let me show you some colors that I'm proposing.
Well, Jerry is getting the other materials. I want to emphasize that the reason I'm not paying any attention is because Jerry and I have talked at length, and I have looked at these in depth.
Okay. Um, we're proposing we change up your color scheme just a little bit. Right now, you've got these green colors in the lobby outside, you've got some gray colors in the first floor, um, front wall covering around here. Try to put a little bit of a peachy color. Now, these colors look gaudy, but these are the real colors, so it's, you know, limitations of the colored pencil. But this would be your, your lobby, standing right here looking back at this, to try to harmonize it in historic wise with the rest of the building. This door, for example, is reused from the second floor. Take the panels out and put the, put black in it. Yeah, so that they really were a nickel, let me speak. Give the old floor tiles a little bit of spending flourish and contrast. Elevator colors, um, this would be an accent color here, this would be the wall cover here, this would be your typical paint color. Uh, this is the wood, it's more or less the wood that you have, except this, of course, is your commission chambers. Um, we're doing a little bit of thing, a few things in the way of acoustics and code compliance, that because we're moving something, uh, we're gonna go ahead and fix it. For example, enclosing this door off here, I've got acoustical paneling scheduled here so that the noise of the street doesn't come straight in, but begins to bounce around and make this room a little more dense than it is right now. Some acoustical panels there and here to stop resting the noise, slow it down, you know, keep the drinking fountain there and keep it from getting into the commission chambers. And, and this would be an acoustical panel on one side here. This, of course, would be a stucco that blends in taller colors, the brick. Questions? Thank you. Okay, money-wise, um, I did a cost takeoff that estimated, uh, the bids would be somewhere between a hundred and twelve and a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the base bid, which is the main part, it's covered by your grant. You've got around a hundred and ten thousand left in the grant after the fees and printing costs have taken out. That plus, uh, five to ten thousand in addition to the hundred and twenty-two would be for change orders and, uh, some changes that we're expecting to get into, some not in contract items, such as the carpet is not in the contract. We can do that by separate contract easily. I would suggest a couple of pieces of furniture, like right here and right here, which would be here and there, that when people attend commission meetings or when they're waiting to do the court business, they can sit down. You know, that's a couple hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars, not in contract, of course, that would have to come on a building maintenance fund.
What sort of motion do we need?
We've suggested a motion to authorize bid. Advertisement forbid for bid for the project.
I move that we, uh, let's see, that we authorize, uh, advertisement for bid for the handicapped renovation plans and specs for the building.
Is there any discussion from the commission? Jerry, you've done a good job, and I know you've been waiting, working hard and waiting a long time.
Oh, can I make, Mayor Lemon? This money is, uh, I was heavily involved last year with the, uh, the board on grants. I think I've said this before, I, this particular group may or not have heard me say it, so I thought I'd say it again. Kevin Stowers did a fantastic job in preparing this presentation for the city, and this particular grant was done so well, I'm not sure how many grants were given, eight or nine or ten in that range, but it was the number one grant. That's the background on where these monies came from, from Texas State. I just wanted Kevin to be credited for it.
Is there any discussion from the audience about this, um, the handicap renovation plans? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number twelve is consider report or update by representatives of tourism advisory board. Now, I got the message that they were not quite ready, unless there is someone here?
That is correct.
That is correct.
We have a new chairman and not quite prepared for the presentation, and I've
They have a new chairman and not quite prepared for the presentation, and I'd say we recommend that he table for a hundred and fifty.
I will retain that order.
Second? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Westbrook?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sattler?
Yes.
Mayor Lemon?
Yes.
Agenda item, no. Ms. Lanes comments. No action may be taken on items discussed at this time. Requests may be made in such matters discussed, placed in a later agenda. Ms. Lanes comments from the commission first of all. From the audience?
Mayor, we did have an item in your information packet. The state will be upsizing the stop signs as requested by the commission. They will need to order some posts to have that done, but they are planning to issue that as soon as possible.
And Maury, even though we didn't have an official item, the city manager's report, is there anything that you would like to?
Well, the favor of time is coming upon us for budget workshops, and so starting probably tomorrow morning, we'll be soliciting each commissioner to give us, when you have your calendar for you, to get some ideas on times and how much time we can block out. Kevin and I have been working the past two weeks, and we're basically ready to present some alternatives to you in the form of budgets, so we'll be starting calling you tomorrow and set something up.
Is there no other, Ms. Lanes, commission of the project?
I just want to thank Mr. Stowers for taking this.
No problem at all. We'll have to do it. It was a very worthwhile suggestion.
You're not used to getting on this floor, are you?
I am wondering what's going to happen.
A hand? Absentee voting is now taking place regarding the one-half sales increase and vote downstairs in the lobby here. Between now and August the eighth, regular business hours, which are, what, eights to eight-five. If there's no other, Ms. Lanes comments, or your motion for adjournment?
I move.
Meeting is adjourned.